It is 6:30. I will now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on May 9, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knudsen.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Quinn.
Present.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. All right. Item number four, I have some proclamations to read this evening. The first is a proclamation for Older Americans Month. Whereas Coralville includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas Coralville recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and supports older adults may need to make choices about how they age. And whereas Coralville can work to build an even better community for our older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, and inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month. And I urge residents to celebrate our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking about aging. Signed on this 9th day of May 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. And I think we have some folks here to accept this proclamation. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Okay, you take the picture.
Thank you.
Sure.
So there, would you like, oh, you have handouts?
I do have handouts.
Awesome, all right.
I love handouts.
Hi, my name is Dan Gearing. I live at Coral Ridge Apartments.
Okay.
Just want to say thank you for anyone involved in that project.
We might, we'll have you step to the mic so that everybody that is watching can hear your wonderful comments. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm Dan Gearing. Live at Coral Ridge Apartments. Lived there about two and a half years. I really appreciate it. I just want to say thank you to anyone involved with that project.
Thank you, Dan.
Are you all acquainted with the Livable Community for Successful Aging Policy Board in the county?
Yes.
Okay, so I would encourage you to work with them. I know one of their interests is housing. There's a gentleman named Bill Gorman. Are you acquainted with him?
Yes.
Okay. Are you acquainted with accessible dwelling units? That's something Cedar Rapids has recently signed on to, that people could like convert a garage or something to a, something like an apartment. So if you've never heard of accessible dwelling units, maybe you read that article in the Cedar Rapids Gazette. You could just Google it, ADU Cedar Rapids. Well, I don't want to talk too much. I just want to really thank you. Have a great day.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Would you like to take a photo?
Sure.
Okay.
Why are you looking at me?
No, well, we should be looking at you.
I'll smile over to you.
If it was Keith or I, we'd want to be in that.
Yeah. Really?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I ran into bed. I don't know. It wasn't there before. Behind you, Kelly. Something's sticking out.
What was that?
Okay. All right, on to proclamation number two. This one is for AAPI Heritage Month. Whereas, May is recognized as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a time for communities to celebrate their contributions, culture, and history of Asian and Pacific Islanders, Pacific Islander Americans. And whereas Coralville is home to a diverse community of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans who have made significant contributions to the social, cultural, and economic fabric of our community. And whereas the month of May provides an opportunity to highlight and recognize the achievements and struggles of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans who have often faced discrimination, racism, and unjust treatment in our society. And whereas, Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Heritage Month originated in a congressional bill in June of 1977. On March 28, 1979, President Carter issued a presidential proclamation numbered 4650 proclaiming the week beginning on May 4, 1979, as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week. And whereas, on May 1, 2009, President Obama issued Presidential Proclamation 8369 proclaiming May 2009 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas, the observance of Asian American and Pacific Islander Month provides a chance for all individuals and organizations in Coralville to learn about and appreciate the rich cultural heritage and diversity of our community. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Coralville, Iowa, and encourage residents to promote greater understanding, acceptance, and appreciation of the diversity that makes our community stronger and more vibrant, and along with local organizations and businesses to participate in activities and events that highlight the heritage and contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans throughout the month of May and beyond. Signed on this 9th day of May 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. And I believe we have several folks here with us this evening to receive this proclamation. Please step up to the mic and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, thank you for having us. So my name is Jennifer Nguyen. My family is from Vietnam. I am the first generation in my family, born and raised in the States. Despite this month being the celebration of AAPI communities, we continue to face stereotypes and increased hate incidents. And this proves that we must go beyond AAPI Heritage Month. We need to move past recognition and into action year-round. It is more impactful to support and learn from the individuals and histories within our community.
And I have the meeting.
Hello, my name is Omega Dan So. I'm an immigrant from the Philippines, and I moved to Iowa in 1992. I'm a par educator at West High, and I'm also Coralville Community Ambassador. This year, I'm fortunate enough to work with amazing ladies such as Jennifer Nguyen, Haifun, and Ming Lo to host Coralville's very first Asian festival. It will be held on May 13 from 12 to 6 p.m. at S.T. Morrison Park in Coralville. This year, we will have performers from Cedar Rapids, University of Iowa, and West High School. It will be a celebration that will showcase culture and heritage from different countries such as Vietnam, China, Japan, Korea, India, and Philippines. We'll have traditional dances, fashion show, origami folding, calligraphy, and many delicious cuisines from Asia. We are grateful to the City of Coralville for its support in our event, and your support shows that we matter and you care. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to us about the proclamation this evening? Okay, let's take a photo.
Come up for the photo.
Thank you.
Whatever that is back there.
Yeah.
Stick that.
Yeah.
Stick that.
Yeah.
You really got it.
Yeah.
There.
There you go.
Thank you.
Here. Here. Okay, Kelly.
All right, and last but not least, I have a proclamation for National Bike Month and Bike to Work Week. Whereas, the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and environmentally sound form of transportation, recreation, and enjoyment. And whereas, increasing bicycle access and safety enables residents of Coralville, including young people, to participate more fully in the educational, social, and economic life of our community. And whereas, the metro area bicycle network, including our off-street trail system, now attracts bicycle tourism and economic development that helps support local businesses. And whereas, throughout the month of May, residents of Coralville can experience the joys of bicycling by participating in educational programs, rides, commuting events, charity events, or by simply going for a ride. And whereas, these activities create greater public awareness of the rights and responsibilities of bicyclists to improve safety for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Bike Month, and May 15 through the 21st, 2023, to be Bike to Work Week in Coralville. And we urge all residents who are able to join us in this observance by bicycling for fitness, recreation, or to commute to work. Further, I ask all motorists to drive safely and with full attention to the road by putting away electronic devices, obeying all traffic signs, signals, and speed limits, sharing the road by allowing no, low less than five feet of separation when passing a bicyclist, or taking to the adjacent lane to pass on roads with speed limits over 25 miles per hour, and yielding to bicyclists and pedestrians as required by law. Signed on this 9th day of May 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. And I believe we have someone here to receive this proclamation as well.
Hi, my name's Lydia Benninghoven. I'm one of the Bike Iowa City ambassadors. I moved here last summer, and I can say I've been really impressed with the cycling community and really appreciate all the investments. It makes it a really enjoyable community to live in. So, thank you so much.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. All right. Let's grab a photo. On to item number five, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would wish to address us this evening? Okay. We will move on then to item number six. Lot 1, Coralville West, Part 2. This is a public hearing for a rezoning for, it's not, oh, it's not a public hearing. Okay. I apologize. We do not have a public hearing. This is just the second reading of an ordinance, it looks like. Okay. Thank you for that correction. Okay. This is a, this rezoning is for a 9,900 square foot, one-story, multi-tenant commercial building in the West Land Use Area, north of Highway 6, and on the parcel in between Culligan Water and Bach Meyer Carpet 1. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1005, and ordinance amending the Coralville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended. Rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the City of Coralville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 1, Coral West, Part 2, from C2 Arteria Commercial District to CPUD2 Commercial Plan Unit Development 2 District, introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Item number seven, mobile vendor permit. This resolution will establish a $25 annual fee for mobile food vendor permits that allow operation at any location where the, where they have the property owner or manager's permission. Permits will expire on December 31, and the fee will not be pro-rated. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an annual fee for mobile food vendors, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eight, West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1. This is for Phase 1 of the Central Trunk Sewer Project, and will include building a trunk sewer from the Clear Creek Amana Community School District New Elementary School Site to the northwest corner of Highway 6 and Lucas Avenue. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution accepting bids and awarding a contract for the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions, comments, or discussion? Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number nine, 1002 Fifth Street Demolition and HMA Overlay. This is for the demolition of a vacant structure and drive at the former post office food pantry site. This would also include the paving of the parking lot for a post office drop box drive-through. Could we, and we have a quotation report to start this?
Yep. Yes. We received three bids for this project. The bids range from $33,400 to about $46,000. So we would recommend the award to D.W. Zinser Company in the amount of $33,400.
Great. Thank you for that. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting quotations and approving a demolition services agreement for the demolition and HMA overlay at 1002 Fifth Street, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments?
And the note, it says, yeah, 10,700. That's just a typo.
That was from the last demolition, yes. Okay. Yep.
When is it scheduled to be demolished?
We will award tonight, and then by law, by regulation, they have to give 10 days notice to the DNR before they can start. So I'll send the contract up to them tomorrow, and then they'll get that process started. And my guess is, Zinser is a large company. This will not take very long. We will, as we described, we'll have the drive-through in there, and everything else will be seeded so that it will be open space until such time as that property redevelops with some of the surrounding properties.
Thank you.
Is there a formal arrangement with postal service for that drop box? No, it's just based on an agreement with them, and that was one of the few places that were eligible for the spot.
So if we gave that up, we probably wouldn't get one back.
Yeah. So you have a long-term plan to put around about in that corner. Is this drop box going to be in a position that it won't need to be moved again when we, when and if we do a?
Well, we're not moving it this time. It's just taking care of the driveway, and we don't know. I mean, until we get into that design.
Yeah, I mean, part of the parking lot is, while we bought this building the first place, a lot of the, some of the parking lot up front's going away, so.
When we do a roundabout?
Yes.
Yeah. Got it. So we might have to move it again when that, when and if that happened.
Yeah, we're not moving the, we're not moving the post box.
Oh, I mean, concrete. We might, we may have to move it for?
Yeah, at that point, it'd be removing it because it's as far away from the corner as it can get.
Any other questions?
Does it have to be on a, on a public land, like the post, like that box?
Yeah, that, or a right-of-way, something like that, yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 10, nonprofit organization funding agreements. This agreement with ICAD is to foster and promote economic development and provide services to existing businesses in Coralville. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving that certain agreement with the Iowa City Area Development Group, ICAD, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. I'll start just by asking the question about the merger. So will we need to amend this?
Yeah. This, this would be for the current fiscal year, which our payment always is in the last quarter of the year. And so that'll be this fiscal year, and the next fiscal year would be, would change to the merged group.
Okay. And that's when we would be able to look at, you know, the scope of the services that they provide, and whether or not it will stay consistent with. Okay, great. Any other questions?
What agreement is this replacing?
This is, if you remember last year, we had to do all these agree with state auditors requirement. This is just the budgeted amount, or the amount we give to ICAD for each, the fiscal years, and then they have requirements to report about the University of Iowa Research part back to us. So this is just the annual to make sure that the auditors have the agreement before we put the money out.
So it's about the same amount as?
It's the same, it's the same amount, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Any other questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knudsen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 10, I'm sorry, item number 11, fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. This is to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget for revenues and expenditures. The public hearing on this will be on May 23, 2023, and the budget amendment needs to be filed with the state by May 31, 2023. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 budget amendment, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments on this? Perhaps an overview would be appropriate? If Melissa, would you like to come up and give us some information?
Yeah. So I believe you all got a handout that's going to be published.
Yeah.
So I'd like just to spend a little bit of time going through it.
Sure.
So if we just start at the top, and on the left-hand column, that's what was budgeted for the year. That's what was filed with the state around this time last year. The middle column will be the amendment and what we're proposing to change. And then you're just adding across to get to what the new budget will be for this fiscal year. So the first change is other city taxes, and you see that will be line 6, and that other city taxes is increasing by 800,000, and that represents the hotel motel conservative estimate of revenue, additional revenue. Licenses and permits is the next number, and that's 160,000.
Can you hold on?
Yeah.
Well, I don't see the actual fiscal year 23.
So that will be the first column. It's titled Total Budget as Certified or Last Amendment. It's the first column.
Budgeted fiscal year 24?
This is for '23, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is for fiscal year?
Oh, am I looking at the wrong thing? I can look on a minute. That's at 24. Is that the right one? Yes, that's the right one.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, so here's total budget. This is what the state has right now, and here's what we're amending.
Okay.
So that first was hotel motel tax increase for 800,000. And then the next one down that we're amending is for licenses and permits, and that's additional revenue generated for building permits, estimated to be 160,000. And then the next increase will be for intergovernmental category, and that represents state and federal grants that our transit will receive. The next one is charges for services, and that's an additional 130,000 for services provided through the rec program and through CCPA, additional programs. They're generating additional revenue. The next change will be under the miscellaneous category, and there'll be an increase of 283,000 there, and that'll be for additional donations, sponsorships that the city has received in association with the Fourth Fest, Fry Fest, BRR, the basket sales. Sorry, I think I said 180, or 283. It's 263. And then additional financial, other financing sources. So we'll be issuing bonds, and so we need to account for those. And so those are additional financing. And then the proceeds for the hotel loan is also included in there. So about 48 million for bond, and additional 4 million for the hotel, is where that 52 million came from. And then there's expenditures. So public safety will increase, and that's because we're going to be replacing a fire engine chassis for around 350,000. And then there was some carryover for an expense that the police had that didn't come in in time, so they're allowed to get the expense this year. And that was around 36,000. The next increase is culture and rec category, and again, these are just additional expenses that are offsetting that revenue that we recognized above, so for the additional programs that they're providing. Community and economic development, again, additional expenses. This is again associated with Fourth Fest, Fry Fest. This is again associated with Fourth Fest, Fry Fest. And then... And also in that economic development includes the offset for the additional permits or the expense associated with generating that additional revenue for building permits. And then the last one is the debt service. Sorry, not last. Second to last is debt service. And again, that's... We're issuing bonds and then we're going to pay off some debt with that. And then finally, the capital projects. So you'll notice in the first column, we didn't have any capital projects expensed at the beginning of the year. We weren't sure what those were going to be and now that we're more sure of what we're going to spend, we put an additional 10 million in there. So overall, we're increasing our fund balance just over 1.5 million.
Awesome. Thank you for that overview and I appreciate the explanation.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
So which fund? Is that mostly the general fund?
Um...
Or is that a...
It's...
Several of them.
Several, but I would say mainly general because there's a lot that falls under the general fund, yes. And then, you know, debt service.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number 12, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented A to R.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item number 13, city administrators' report.
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of quick items. This continues our time for recycling and people to clean up around their properties. And this Saturday is the recycle swap meet, Saturday morning. And then next week, on the regular scheduled garbage day, is mayor's cleanup. So you can put out items that you couldn't get rid of through recycle swap meet or through the garage, citywide garage shows. So just remember, people, there's that... Those opportunities. And please consider bringing items to the recycle swap meet or use other sources before you put it out on the curb to dispose of the items. So that's all I have.
Great. Thanks so much. Mayor's report, I don't have much this evening. I just wanted to note that this week is teacher appreciation week and I wanted to say thank you to all of the educators in our community. I... You know, public education is very important to me. My dad was a public school teacher for many years. Both of my grandmothers were public school teachers. My sister is a public school teacher. My son is a para educator at one of our public schools in the Iowa City Community School District. All five of my children attend public school. So I know that educators have had it really tough right now. I'm sure my colleague would be in agreement with me on that. And I just want to show my support for our educators and I, you know, I'm really grateful for the education that my kids have received from our public schools. And I know that every single day, when I send my kids through the doors of our schools, I know that they are loved. I know that they are cared for and I know that they are in the best hands. And that gives me a lot of confidence as a parent and it's something that I'm really proud of. You know, strong public schools make our community stronger. So thank you to all of the teachers and educators that are out there. And that is all I have. City attorneys' report.
I wanted to thank you on behalf of my wife Shirley for your declaration for older Americans.
We'll tell Shirley that I'm glad to accommodate.
I told my... I told one of my other cities that they celebrate attorneys, the same week they do Shark Week on Discovery Channel. So I have nothing else.
I love it. That's great. Committee and council members' report. We'll start down here with Councilmember Goodrich.
I'd like to thank all the departments during this busy time of springtime and especially Parks and Recreation have really gone out of their way to have programs and cleanups and just everything that Sherry Proud and her whole team are doing is really great. And we look forward to 4th of July time and also RagBri where the whole city will be involved. I wanted to mention that Dr. or Mr. Lyman, I believe was his name, the pedestrian safety person that was here last meeting that talked about safety of crosswalks. And I'd like to look into that a little more, especially on busy streets. He mentioned Fifth Street and I think of Oakdale Boulevard, too. There's the lines, the white lines to go across, but it's pretty speedy and getting very busy on those roads. So I think it'd be nice if we could look at that. Also, just wondering about Camp Cardinal Road, how that construction is going and how much longer people can wait for that to happen. Could you talk, Scott?
Yeah, it's actually Camp Cardinal Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So the reason the road is closed right now from Highway six south to the first intersection at James Street is due to the construction of a trail project. And they've made good progress on the phase that they're working on now. I believe we have about two, two and a half weeks left for our closure. But I think I maybe mentioned a council meeting or two ago that we are trying to coordinate quite a bit of railroad crossing improvement work with Iowa Interstate Railroad at the same time. They've been doing some work. You've probably seen their maintenance equipment running up and down the tracks paralleling Highway six over the past few weeks, but they have not tackled the railroad crossing itself yet. But we continue to check with them daily to see when they're going to get there. So right now, I would expect Camp Cardinal Boulevard to remain closed where it is into early June.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I have one more thing. I know it's going to be a very nice sidewalk and everything and we've been looking forward to that. So thank you. It's just hard to get to the post office right now, but we need to make extra time for that. And I wanted to mention, of course, that RagBri is looking for homes and yards for people to stay in. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Councilmember Jones.
A couple of things. I just wanted to publicly congratulate the three police officers that were promoted. Kyle Nicholson to lieutenant and Mike DeJarnia to sergeant and Brad Clark to sergeant. All great young men, all West High grads, which I found very interesting. So locally, young men serving our community. And so I just wanted to congratulate them on that. And then also wanted to give my congratulations. I know a number of you were there to child serve on their groundbreaking. It was interesting. They had footings poured the day of the groundbreaking. I went by two or three days later and steel's erected already. So they're moving quickly. So a nice addition to a great organization in our community. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say thank you to the mayor for the proclamation, for the AAPI proclamation. That means a lot. I think it's the right step that we take in our community to recognize all these communities of color that call Coralville home and the larger county home as well. Along with that, I know it's already been set, but I'm going to give another plug for the Coralville Asian Fest this Saturday from noon to six at Esti Morrison Park. There's a lot of performances, a lot of activities. We have many, many great organization and company involved to make this happen. It's a fun, family-friendly event. Even if you don't have a family, come by yourself. There's activity for you as well. Without the support of a lot of people, it would not have been possible. And I think the city of Coralville is one of our supporter. So thank you for that. I do have a few concerns regarding the park that I just looked at. I hope that all of the things will get clear out of there soon. There's some Miss America truck in there that digging up the ground. So I wasn't sure what happened in there. And then it's not unfortunate, but it's unfortunate timing that the... I think the shred, is paper shred is also on the same day or not?
No, that was last weekend.
Oh, that was last weekend. Okay, because Sherry was saying something that they have to close part of the park because of a big truck. And so I wasn't sure if that's going to be a problem. That's great news. So no construction there, but hopefully everything will be moved out there by noon so that we can celebrate the festival. And I encourage all of you to please come out and celebrate with us. That's all. Thank you.
Awesome. And I'm very excited and I just want to say congratulations and great job to all of your colleagues and your committee. I know how hard it is to get an event going and getting it up off the ground and getting all the sponsorships and all the logistics. So I know it'll be fantastic and I'm really looking forward to it. Great job to all of you. Councilmember Gross.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also appreciate your comments that you made on public education. It means a lot personally and I think the byproduct that we put out is a pretty high-quality product. As Keith mentioned, I was also going to talk about Kyle, Mike, and Brad. And I had Kyle as a student and feel very honored and safe and well that students and people like Kyle are part of our police force as well as Mike and Brad. And just the students that were here for Asian Pacific Islander Awareness Month, those are all West High students as well. And I just think they just make our school and our community such a better place. I, too, had a question. Scott, good. You stayed in your chair. Excellent. You must have known it was coming. Do we have an update on First Avenue Extension Study?
No, we don't have the traffic data information yet from the MPOJC. So I did send out an email to them late this afternoon, just checking on it, so...
Do you know what a timeline might be or...
Well, we know it needs to be collected before the end of the current school year because otherwise the data will be skewed. So I would expect it, you know, any day.
Okay. Excellent. Wonderful. Just going over my notes. Oh, the other thing, too, Mayor, I'll report. Last week I was able, you know, we as the council talked about some concerns that we had just with our relation with the University of Iowa and a host of topics. And I was able to meet with a senior official in President Wilson's office and was really pleased with how that meeting went. And I felt like our concerns were heard and validated. And I'm anxious and excited to hopefully report back some good news in the coming weeks. So thanks, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. And then finally, Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry I missed last week's meeting and reminder, I'm going to miss the one in two weeks, a couple important meetings. But I did review the tape and I want to second Lori's motion to improve safety of the crosswalks. I think he had a comment on Fifth Street. I've been across that many times and would agree with the citizen who had that comment. That would be my priority. I think Oakdale's another good idea. And then there's one on 12th Street, past Oakdale, that gets a fair amount of use right along the trails there that isn't really an intersection to consider for the future as well. And along those lines, encourage everybody to bike and appreciate the Bike Month proclamation and certainly biked here today and hope others can start to join me. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Jones, seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.